We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city plan, to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take the roll.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Ms. Messina?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos?
Here.
Mr. Gales?
Mr. Haw?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Canar?
Here.
Ms. Ringler and Mr. Woods are absent. We have six in a quorum.
All right, thank you. At this point, we need to approve the minutes of last month's meeting. Does anybody have any comment on, any notice any issues with them?
I would move that we approve the April 17 minutes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, having a motion is second. Please take the vote, Chris.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
I will abstain since I wasn't here.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with one abstaining.
All right, Mr. Feiner, do we have any communications to the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple. Wanted to announce a couple changes, although you heard one of those. We want to again congratulate Commissioner Messina now on her nuptials from last month, or this month, last month. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Feiner.
Got the nameplate change. We also have a new staff member we want to introduce. You'll hear more presentation from Mr. Nunabel tonight. John Nunabel is our new planner, senior planner with this, with staff, having experience in California, Arizona, and Albania of, as planning, with planning. So, welcome, John. He's been here probably a month or two.
Two.
Two. So, he's been down this road before, so he knows what to do. So, we welcome John. Great addition. And for those of you who knew Dean Dietiker, that sort of took his place. Couple of, one events that you might be interested in. We have a bike with the mayor and city manager this Wednesday, May 17th, at 1:00, outside City Hall. Bring your bike, bring your helmet, and we'll take you on a six-mile, more or less, ride through the city's bikeways and bike routes. And I think you'd find it very enjoyable if you want to join us. We definitely would welcome you. And then lastly, just to give you an update, the city council did pass the resurs annexation and PUD amendment last, that you handled last month. So, that has been, that has been approved. So, that's all I have.
Right, does anybody have any declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications? Mr. Armstrong?
I will be stepping out for item E2B this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Anyone else? All right, then it is time to move on to our first public hearing. Z-1701, 101 North Kansas Avenue. And Mr. Haw is going to address us.
Yes, thank you very much. Z-1701, this is an application by 101 North Kansas Avenue LLC to change the zoning of this property from I-2 heavy industrial to D-3 downtown district. This change in zoning to D-3 will accommodate the renovation reuse of the existing building for 33 residential apartments and 30 parking spaces at basement and first floor levels. There's the, the city map showing the subject property. That's the zoning map. I'm going to point out, so while the zone, proposed zoning change is not tied specifically to this project, the zoning, zoning would allow them, allow the developer to do this project. Residential land use is generally not permitted under the current zoning, so the zoning is required for, for residential development. This is a, an existing building that was built in 1909 for the Parkhurst Davis Mercantile Company as a wholesale grocery warehouse. In, in years, in many decades, it's been used as a storage building, but not really to its fullest capacity. One thing that you'll notice is that the property adjacent and to the north of the subject property is already zoned D-3. The, the governing body approved this zoning change from I-2 to D-3 for these two parcels in August 2011. One of the, one of the issues with anytime you change the zoning, what you're doing is you're changing the standards that apply to future development of the property, and that's a significant fact in this case. Why, in the, in the I-2 district, a wide variety of light and heavy industrial uses are permitted by right, I should say. Some of the most intense uses permitted by right in the I-2 district include outdoor storage, beverage manufacturing and bottling, transportation and large equipment manufacturing, and other manufacturing of previously prepared materials. As I mentioned before, multifamily residential uses are not permitted in the I-2 district. Industrial uses are generally not permitted in the D-3 district with some minor exceptions, very minor exceptions. And of course, multifamily residential uses are permitted in the D-3 district. The D-3 district is a zoning district that's really designed to facilitate the redevelopment of downtown, of the downtown area and create a vibrant area. So, with this application, staff is, is recommending approval. I think key is the fact that the, the new zoning implements the plans for the area. It's consistent with the, with the land use and growth management plan. The, the current zoning doesn't really facilitate a very easy reuse of the building. It's not really designed for current warehousing standards or distribution standards, or I should, I should say practices, not standards. The changes in standards will actually provide for more compatible land use considering the areas around it. And, and for these reasons, staff is recommending approval. The, the developer did have a neighborhood information meeting, which is required for any zoning change like this, and it was fairly well attended. Some of the issues the people that attended raised had to do with parking and, and the, and the concern about a more intensified use of the alley behind the building. And this is addressed in the staff report, our reasoning about how to address that. And, and with that, I'll take any questions, comments.
Thank you, Mr. Haw. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haw?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Haw?
Looking at the plat, or the zoning map, the curved shaped alleyway that's between, or adjacent to Lot 12, is that considered a, the prominent direction traffic would be going in and out of that area as opposed to the narrow, narrow alleyway that's right behind the property?
That curved section is no longer in use. The way to access the alley is through that straight narrow section.
Okay.
And I will say that currently, it's a narrow, it's a typical alley. It's not very wide, but it does accommodate two-way traffic, or it's, two-way traffic is permitted in the alley currently.
Any other commissioner have a question for Mr. Haw?
Could it?
Yes.
I probably missed it when I was reading, but the alley is a gravel alley. Well, that, is the city planning to pave that, or?
Currently, the, currently the condition of the alley is gravel. The city does not have any immediate plans to pave the alley or improve the alley. As part of this project, the developer would be required to, well, as part of building, renovating the building, not just part of the rezone, but part of renovating the building or getting any permits to occupy the building, the owner slash developer would be required to improve the alley along that segment of the building that fronts on.
Thanks.
Right, do we have any further questions for Mr. Haw? Seeing none, we'd like to hear from the applicant at this time. Evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Wilson. I am the managing partner for 101 North Kansas LLC. I think Mr. Haw did a, a good job of capsulizing our project. I will repeat a piece or two of it. Thirty-three total one and two-bedroom units. And on the main floor, the current main floor, and in the basement, we're going to provide 29 or 30 parking spaces within the building and a little bit of common area as well. The existing building, as he described, Mr. Haw described, is really not functional for its original use of 100 years ago. It is a concrete structure with brick veneer, with stucco was overlaid over the brick. We're not sure between 45 and, and 65 in that neighborhood. And we'd like to put it on the historic register and renovate it. There's a total of 96 blocked-in windows. They're five feet wide, eight feet high, and we'd like to return those to their original state. And we'll have, with historic approval, we'll have some balconies on the west side, on the alley side only. The structure's concrete, the bones are good, and we would do some repainting of it as well. In the image you're looking at there, there's an elevated, what used to be a, a receiving dock, and when the city widened First Street a number of years ago, they, they took half of that dock off, and so it's a six-foot wide area now, and the intent is to create some outdoor activity space or tables and whatnot for the residents. We did have a meeting with the neighborhood, and as Mr. Haw mentioned, there were concerns about traffic and parking. In addition to the 29 parking spaces on the interior of the building, we've acquired control of an adjacent property that'll allow us to have at least 20 more parking spaces. So, for a 33-unit apartment building, we will have a minimum of 49 spaces, 1.5 per, per unit, and we feel that'll be adequate to address the needs of a one- and two-bedroom apartment project. The other concern mentioned was traffic. The alley is currently used as a shortcut predominantly heading north, but also to some degree heading south. The problem being those folks head east on First Street, they identify a queue of two or three parking spaces waiting to cross Kansas Avenue, and they take the easiest route of choice, which we'd zoom down the alley behind this building. We, we have a appointment set up with city staff this coming Wednesday to discuss possibilities of vacating this alley. And once vacation, if, if successful and agreed to by all property owners along the alley, we would likely explore a one-way heading south option until you hit this building, where we would have two-way traffic right at the building. The parking will be accessed off of the alley side. As Mr. Haw mentioned, we would pave the, the entire alley at that point. You see that the alley is actually 15 feet behind this structure, and if you go by the property, there's a 12-foot wide block building that is in terrible shape and will come off as part of our project. And so, we will still have a 30-foot wide area there. We will constrain that a little bit on our end to protect our, our residents and probably put some bollards there, and we'll have to have a spot for a dumpster and so forth. But basically, as Mr. Haw mentioned, it will already accommodate two-way traffic, and we will allow that to get widened a bit and to eliminate this, this structure impediment that does restrict traffic a little bit there. We, we have Downtown Topeka Inc. support. We've been awarded a grant to work on the property through their program. The building meets the criteria of the, the overall Downtown Topeka Master Plan goals, and we feel it'll make a great improvement to the neighborhood. So, with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioners, does anybody have a question for Mr. Wilson? Thank you. I thought your testimony was pretty concise and on point, so I don't have any either.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the Right, seeing no one, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, this time we're open for discussion among ourselves. Further questions for Mr. Haw, if anybody feels the need. Would encourage people to at least speak their mind a little bit, since we've had kickback from the city council, that we're not voicing the reasons for our decisions, so. Ms. Cavazos?
One of the emails that you received was in regards to the sidewalks from Topeka Metro. Is that something that's going to be addressed, is improving the sidewalk by in front or to the side of the building that's being proposed? This one was dated on April 10th.
So, Commissioner Cavazos, the, if there are the conditions...
Crosswalk, I'm sorry.
Yes, so the crosswalk and sidewalks, if the sidewalks are in poor condition, the owner, as they get permits to occupy the building or renovate the building, they would have to repair the sidewalks or bring them into compliance with this basic standard for a sidewalk. As far as a crosswalk, that's something that, I will point that out to our traffic engineer, and if there's warrants for that, I don't, I think that's based on warrants, if there are warrants that justify installing a crosswalk. So, it's not, it's not just a, it's not an arbitrary decision whether to design a street a certain way. It's based on standards, criteria, and, and the warrants that are, that justify that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Armstrong, you had a question?
Just a general comment, I guess. I also was curious about the Polquency Viaduct realignment through downtown, since our firm is, is working on part of that. It's off of, off of the map shown, but about a block south of here, I think, is where the new realigned I-70 alignment would be. So, I think it's mentioned on page 5 of 7 about the Polquency Viaduct study, and it does not directly affect this property, and I just wanted to, I, I did look into that as well, just because I was curious about how close it was. But it is about a block away and has no impact with this. Beyond that, I think it's a great reuse of a building that's not, not getting a lot of, out of it right now.
Just a general comment, too. When I went down there to look around thinking it's going to be a big job to undertake, but how it will really add to downtown and the, the corridor between downtown and Noto. So, it's great, I think.
Thank you. I would note that we had letters of support in, in our packet as well from surrounding businesses, and, and obviously, the concerns that were raised at the public meeting were not so strong that, that we had a, a line of people wanting to come give testimony tonight. So, I'm, you know, pretty strongly in support of this. I'd entertain a, a motion with regard to this.
I would make that motion. Based on the findings and the staff report, I move to recommend approval of the reclassification from I-2 heavy industrial to D-3 downtown district.
I'd second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion or to vote, a vote? Chris, please take the vote.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
And Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our second public hearing of the night. Z-6944H Woodland Park at Soldier Creek, and we're going to hear from Mr. Nunabel. Welcome aboard, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, staff. They've really been great in welcoming me and orienting me, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. Under consideration is amendment related to lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1 of Woodland Park at Soldier Creek, PUD master plan, from PUD M2 planned unit development with use group of M2 multiple-family dwellings, to PUD M1 planned unit development with use group of M1 limited multiple-family dwellings. Applicant being Brick and Mortar Phase 1 Construction. The location of the proposed amendment is generally located southeast of the intersection of Northwest Topeka Boulevard and Northwest Meninger Road, comprising 6.14 acres. Amending the PUD master plan as proposed will provide for 19 new lots for detached single-family homes and/or two-family dwellings. The previously approved PUD for this area provides for assisted and independent living seniors within approximately 115 apartments. The governing body approved the current PUD master plan in January 2005, thus amending and replacing the previous PUD master plan of Northland Shopping Center. As indicated on the aerial photo, the master plan area presently includes older commercial buildings within the central portion of the planned area, as well as newer multifamily apartment buildings located in the southern portion of the master plan area. The subject area, discussion of zoning now, the subject area is immediately within the city's corporate limits, with the current city limit line being at Meninger Road. Surrounding development is generally semi-rural, but increasingly urban, especially to the south. In one point faith, excuse me, 1.5 acre parcel immediately east of the subject site contains a single-family residence and is zoned M2, while other adjacent areas within city limits are zoned R1, single-family dwellings, with commercial and industrial zone properties located to the south of Soldier Creek along Topeka Boulevard. The unincorporated Shawnee County area north of Meninger Road is zoned exclusively R1 rural residential, with existing development consisting primarily of single-family homes, with the Northland Christian Church being located across Meninger Road from the subject site. In regard to proposed PUD elements included are utilities, circulation and access, parking, buildings, signage, and landscaping and fencing. In regard to circulation and access, internal circulation and access within the project site will be provided by the existing private street of Northwest Magnolia Avenue, and an additional cul-de-sac roadway as proposed will extend southward from Meninger Road and will also be a private street. Sidewalks will be provided along private streets, as well as within public rightsway along Meninger Road and Topeka Boulevard adjacent to the project area. A revised traffic impact analysis is not being required for this proposed development because it is significantly less intensive than the development allowed in the existing PUD master plan. While the city has no plans in the near term to improve Meninger Road, the PUD master plan are noted to indicate that property owners agree to irrevocable waiver of objection to participate in a street benefit district for future improvements to that roadway. In regard to building types, pursuant to the proposed M1 user group designation, each of the 19 residential building lots may contain, contain either a single-family dwelling or two-family duplex, or one-half of two-family duplex with a common wall between adjoining units placed from property line. In order to provide increased certainty, the future residents and owners as to the placement of particular types of housing units, staff is recommending the addition of a note requiring a unit plan to be submitted. Due to the width of the proposed lots and the possible inclusion of two-family dwellings, there are potential negative aesthetic impacts of garage-dominated facades and driveway-dominated front yards. To reduce these potential negative impacts, staff is recommending the addition of two additional notes that address these matters. The PUD is also noted to indicate that a landscape plan shall be submitted and approved prior to issuance of a building permit, and shall address landscaping along Topeka Boulevard, as well as Meninger Road, as in addition to landscaping along the south side of the project area within a drainage area that comprises a significant slope. Should be noted, too, that a major plant in the subject area comprising lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, is being processed concurrently with this proposed amendment, PUD master plan, and will be addressed later in your meeting agenda this evening. The project applicant did hold, as is required, a neighborhood information meeting. Questions, comments, or attendees were concerned with traffic impacts, numbers of owner versus rent or occupied units, building heights, purchase prices, open space, play areas for And a summation of that neighborhood meeting is included in your packets. As done with any proposed zone change, staff has completed analysis utilizing standard factors, and these include character of neighborhood, linked-time properties remain vacant, performance to conferencive plan, the extent to which removal of restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties, relative gain in public health, safety, and welfare, availability of public services, and compliance of zoning and subdivision regulations. Based upon the above findings, and, are based upon findings and analysis, staff does recommend approval of the PUD amendment, subject to conditions in the staff report. This includes a addition of a notation that was given to you in the supplemental memo this evening regarding the timing and phasing for completion of sidewalks. And we would also, I would also mention that in regard to condition three, the note involving lance, or fencing materials, has been amended to include wood as an option. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am, of course, available to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Nunabel. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. Mr. Nunabel, for the sidewalks, are they on both sides of the road, or just required to do one side?
Yes, Commissioner, the applicant is proposing sidewalks on both sides.
Both sides, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Nunabel? Hey, with, yes, Ms. Cavazos?
And did you say that the frontage road would not be there, or it would remain?
The existing frontage road?
Correct.
Thank you for, actually didn't address that in my presentation, but it, it does not, it will not remain.
Okay.
That's right. Now, I'm sorry, just to clarify, that's the frontage road along Topeka Boulevard.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. That will be removed.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
Mr. Nunabel, could you clarify, you said a major plant of lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, is being processed concurrently. That's the existing lots 1, 2, and 3, and those are being planted in as the multiple lots?
That is correct, I'm sure. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, unless anyone else has any questions, call the applicant at this time. Come forward and speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman Knar. My name is Mark Boyd with SBB Engineering. Here representing the owner of Brick and Mortar Phase One Construction. Have the, one of the owners with me this evening if any questions come up that you want to address him that I can't answer. Mr. Nunabell, thank you. It's a good summary of the project. Couple things I want to maybe enlighten on and bring to your attention. The last comment about the frontage road, maybe to clarify a little bit more, the frontage road will be removed for the extent of this property. The frontage road continuing on south beyond the owner's property is going to remain in place. There will be barricades put up. It's an interesting process, this PUD. There was quite a bit of discussion going on back and forth on some of the conditions. We have settled most of them or an agreement with most of those conditions. There's a couple of them that I think we've just yet to kind of see eye to eye on. So, you know, I think I want to expand on condition two a little bit. However, we're in agreement on it. I just want to bring up the idea of HOA and legal alternatives to an HOA. This project may have some other methods of maintenance requirement other than the HOA through deed restrictions, which I believe if the time comes can be provided as documentation of how this mechanism would work. But I believe that we're satisfied, at least for now, that there is other alternatives besides what we could call our traditional HOAs. Note number four is a difficult one. Item number four, as is written, and it's kind of a philosophical issue of the PUD in general. What I think with this note in a nutshell is trying to protect is the development, building a single-family home or several along the street, and then the developer, for whatever reason, whether it's market-driven or just pure want of building a duplex within that same street, that triggers a review and approval mechanism from the planning department to do so. I think in theory, I think we all understand what the protection is to keep people from themselves, basically, thinking that they're buying into a single-family neighborhood but in essence might be building or ending up living across the street from a duplex. The problem we see with this is there's no policy in place to address this. Like the cart before the horse, if these design standards want to be implemented on PUDs, then there should be some policy in place that has been hashed out through the public process, through the planning commission to do so. I don't know that, been doing this a while, and I don't know that I've seen any requirement ever to submit a design plan or a street plan for how you're going to develop your units on a PUD. So I think we're just, we're a little bit, I can understand the concern, but from an owner's standpoint, this presents several problems to him down the road if these units, if he wants to change single-family to family. The whole essence of the PUD is to have that flexibility. So we are in contention and I guess our requirement, I guess our recommendation or desire would be just to strike item number four completely. I don't see any possible way to amend it that would be satisfactory. Item number five, there's some concern about duplexes that where the garages are together, that that might present a facade issue. Driving down the street, planning would like to, the staff would like to have a one-foot separation between those garage doors. I guess what we'd like to do is add a note to that saying that if the face of that is greater than 24 feet, then there'll be a one-foot separation. As these are set up and as these are designed right now, they'll have single-car garages. So driving down the street, you're going to be looking at basically what looks like a two-car garage. And the design features are in place that I think would make it look like that. However, I think we all understand that if that becomes a four-car garage, then there needs to be some separation. So if that's acceptable to you, we'd just like to add the width. You know, the other conditions I think we're agreeable on. So with that, I guess, you know, I just would like to make one final reminder that this development is currently zoned for a lot of activity. We've got a two-story apartment building with eight units, a three-story apartment building with 12 units, 47 one-bedroom in assisted living facility, 15 two-bedrooms in assisted living facility, and an additional 13 one-bedrooms in a second building that could be built. So there's a lot of units beyond what's being proposed here. And, you know, I think some of the conditions that we've agreed to on here seem to have forgotten that this is a downzoning of what currently could be built. So, and this is a, at least at this point, this is an affordable housing development and it's absorbing a lot of design issues that aren't necessarily or normally imposed on single-family developments. And this again goes back to my statement earlier of implementing these design standards without any vetting of how the process should be reviewed or even the standards of being put in place. I guess that's what I'd like to see come of this is that some more discussion takes place about the necessity for fences along our territories, review of plans of construction of units along private streets, one-foot separation, building facades. These are all things that I think require some input from the public and put into our design standards. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay, I'd like to begin with, just for clarification, that of the staff recommendations.
Yes.
Your client is in agreement with one, three, six, and seven. Number two, you've essentially noted an exception to but are willing to go along with?
I think, no, we're okay with number two. I was just kind of explaining that there are the other mechanism that might be brought forward other than the HOA.
Okay. You'd like to see number four removed?
Yes.
And I'd like to have you clarify number five again, exactly on that 24-foot adjustment.
Okay, that note would read, for any facade enclosing two garage, two garage entries, there'll be a inclusion there of greater than 24 feet. Each entry shall be modulated a minimum of one foot from each other for the purpose of providing relief to the facade plane. So just basically putting a dimension in there. So if you have, if you have two 10-foot stalls, no separation is necessary. It basically kicks in when you have two two-car garages. Okay?
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody else have a question for Mr. Boyd? Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
Can you, can you help me out with the exception to a homeowners' association in this case? Why is that a concern here? On its private streets, I understand that, that part of it. So it has to be maintained, but how, if you don't have a homeowners' association in place, how do you mandate and collect reserves to be able to make improvements when you want to?
Well, you can, I think you can accomplish the same thing through deed restrictions as you do in HOA. HOAs are a pretty loose form, anyway. They're subject to the whim of the association. They can be dissolved pretty much at any time. So they're really no more secure than anything else, but at least with the deed restriction, it runs with it and no majority of people can get together easily and remove those restrictions. So there's three different ways that that could be triggered. It could be the developer himself, if he should happen to have property still available in this, he can trigger a maintenance improvement. Or a second method might be a majority of the homeowners would approve of or push forward the improvement of a street or whatever maintenance issue needs to be made. Or there's a third mechanism that any single owner could file lawsuit and have it issued through the courts.
Thank you.
So I think, you know, it's a pretty solid mechanism, as solid as an HOA, anyway.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Boyd? Right, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If there is any member of the public that would like to address the commission, ask you to step forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one stepping forward before I close the public hearing, and I see Mr. Feiner, Mr. Hall over there talking, I'd, and please confer, but before I close the public hearing so that the applicant could have an opportunity to respond to staff's comments, I'd like to hear your take on articles four and five, our staff recommendations four and five, and how you want to look at those.
In regard to the applicant's suggestion on condition five indicating adding the additional provision of greater than 24 feet, I think that that would satisfy staff's concerns about impacts on the street scape. So yes, I think that would be a good solution to providing for relief when it's required and needed.
Okay, does staff have any comment with regard to recommendation four as to the justification for it being there?
Yes, the, you know, the impact, a big, a primary concern of staff, it has to do with the uncertainty that development that provides for either single-family homes or two-family units have for prospective buyers or property owners later on. That's a big concern. It's my understanding that the city has experienced in the not-too-distant past some problems created when there's been expectations one way or another regarding the type of unit within a development. And the need to, again, address impacts on street scapes if there were, for example, preponderance of two-family units with just a particular one or two units that were single-family. Those impacts were the concern for arriving at condition four in terms of allowing staff to have a review of where particular units would be placed and being able to mitigate impacts as necessary at that point in the review process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
If I could just add to that a bit, the, where this issue really increased our awareness of this was with some development that happened on Gemstone Lane off of 45th, southeast 45th and Gemstone Lane, where you had someone come in and develop a subdivision, and a lot of that was zoned R2. And at the time, the market tended to support single-family residential, so, and it didn't support duplex development, although that's what was allowed in that zoning district. So on one side of the street, you had a lot of single-family residences, and then market turned soft. You can imagine when that happened, that was a few years back. Market turned soft, the west side of the street was, there were no homes built on the west side of the street, and then the market was ripe for duplexes. The rental market was stronger than the single-family market. So then that property went on sale for duplexes, and there were signs stating that. And there was some conversation with potential buyers and developers of those undeveloped properties on the west side of Gemstone Lane, and the people that owned single-family residences found out about that, and they were very frustrated. They were very concerned. They just presumed that it was a single-family residential neighborhood. And while R2 zoning allows, excuse me, M1 zoning allows for that, it also allows for single-family. So that's, that's the issue, or that's the event that kind of brought this to the fore, I guess. And so when we saw this, we thought there was a danger of that. We didn't want that to repeat that problem. It kind of gets to the finding of compatibility. And if this was all straight zoning and not a PUD, we wouldn't have the ability, the city would not have the ability to add a condition like that. But this being a planned unit development, private streets require planning and development, this is, this gives the city an opportunity to provide a little bit more surety to people or certainty to people, predictability. So when we looked at this, how to address this problem, we were trying to come up with something a little more specific, a little more, I guess, a little less open-ended, I guess, but we also didn't want to be too prescriptive about which lots are built. So this, this gives the developer flexibility to build single-family or duplexes. It just provides a little bit of certainty. And that's, that's the background behind it. It's not intended to, in the future, not allow duplexes once single-family residential's there. It's to allow us to at least look at it, how they would be configured in a way to provide for some degree of compatibility among the different uses. And I can give you, I guess I could point to the map. So if you look at the plot map here, I don't know if this is from the PUD master plan or from the plot, I think it's from the plot. If, let's say, I'm going to try to identify, I can't read the numbers, the lot numbers on there, but if you look at the lots on the, on the east side along what is currently Magnolia Avenue, it's an existing private street. It's been approved as a private street. If, let's say that Lot 19, lots 17, 18, and 19 developed as a single-family. And detached, single-family, standard detached, single-family, and then there was some delay, and then at some point, then duplexes were built across the street on lots 12, 13, and 14. That's potentially kind of a compatibility issue. You have single-family units facing two-family residences. There could be other configurations that don't work, but I think there's a way to do this in a way that promotes compatibility. And maybe it's, there are different ways to get at this, but the way the condition is written is to try not to be so very, is try not to be too prescriptive, overly prescriptive about how it's configured.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr. Armstrong.
Can you help me by defining what you term compatibility? What characteristics of a mix of duplexes and single families would generate in your mind a compatible arrangement?
So a compatible arrangement, in my mind, would be that if you look at, so if you looked at lots 17, 18, 19, 12, 13, 14, let's say those were all single-family, and then there's a break that goes to duplexes on the northern port lots, that's probably a compatible arrangement depending on the separation between the buildings. I think it's less compatible if you have single-family residences on one side of the street and duplexes on all along the other side of the street. Another way to do this is, one of these streets has single-family residences all along, all along except for the outer two properties that are along Menninger. Those are probably the least valuable for a single-family residential, I would think. That would be another arrangement. That would be another arrangement. Or just everything along one street being a single-family, everything along another street being duplexes. Those are just some thoughts about what, what would be a compatible arrangement.
That answer your question, Mr. Hall?
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have, anyone else have any questions they want to address to staff while the public hearing's still open?
This question?
Yes.
I guess while the public hearing is still open, maybe a question for Mr. Boyd. I mean, would you prefer?
Mr. Armstrong, I'd like to finish with staff, and then, and then come back and let Mr. Boyd respond to everything at once, if that's all right.
I'm good, then.
Does anybody else have anything for staff so that Mr. Boyd will be able to respond to that? I would like to ask, what process, how do you envision a request taking place and moving through an approval?
Mr. Chair, I guess you could look at this as Plan B. I think Plan A would be to do it right now, put it on the plan, what lots can have single-family, and prescribe that into the notes. As Mr. Hall indicated, we're, and I don't know that the applicant knows right now exactly where the market's going to take this, so we are trying to go to Plan B to provide that open-ended flexibility, so we're not so prescriptive, so I see the Plan B then coming back. I think this is triggered when there is a detached single-family unit applied for. It's not triggered any other way, and so if they build all duplexes, we would never ask for a unit plan. But once a detached single-family is applied for, then we, our antennas go up, we need to understand which lots are going to have and which duplexes, which are going to have single-family, and I think approve something right along the same lines that Mr. Hall presented. I think it's an excellent, there are other variations, but the face-to-face orientation would be the most critical that we protect for detached single-family, so that they're facing each other. That's, so presenting a plan that indicates, that takes this lot layout and indicates which lots can have which, single or two-family, more or less. There's nothing more than that, there's no design issues here. And hopefully, the note, we tried, the bark might be worse than the bite here, it's just, it looks big and looks meaty, but that is the intent, a very simplified lot layout of which lots have which uses.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything further for staff? Staff, any last comments you'd like to address to us?
I don't think so.
Mr. Boyd, I'd welcome to hear from you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to respond, tried to do so briefly. I think, I think you used a really good word, the presumption of an issue here. You're presuming that the person buying the house is not going to know what they bought. I think our issue, again, is not so much, well, it is a little bit, because this is a market-driven development. It's the whole reason why we went with PUD to allow singles or duplexes, the flexibility to do either. Really, the crux is in the process. The reason we did a program-driven PUD is we didn't want buildings on the plan, because I've been around this and done this long enough to know that when you put something on a plan, it becomes the hammer, even if you send in elevations of something you think you might want to build, you know, that all becomes part of the record, and that's the standard that you get compared to. And I think from a developer's standpoint, you resist those as much as possible because you do want as much flexibility in here as you can get. The review process, in my client's ears, sounds very vague and ambiguous, it just, you don't know what you're up against, you know, you don't know what, 10 years from now, five years from now, staff changes, things move on, different mentalities, different, different people, you don't know, and I'm just, my feeling is that the cart is before the horse on here. This is, this to me is far-reaching enough that, and I haven't seen it done before, but if this starts becoming the norm without some sort of a policy or process in place on how this is going to happen, is Development Services going to get involved in this? Is this strictly going to be a planning review? I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, I guess I'll leave it with that.
Mr. Armstrong, you have a question for Mr. Boyd?
I guess that was before Mr. Feiner spoke, but would you prefer Plan A then, that it's prescriptive as to, I mean, Magnolia Court, only single-family residence, Magnolia Lane, I mean, these lots, potentially both, these lots, multifamily only, to set it out?
We, you know, we were kind of discussing that during the conversation, and no, I don't think we would prefer that, because that locks you into a, to something that is so much less flexible. You know, we're always looking on the worst case and the worst scenarios, that, you know, this builder developer happens to build pretty compatible duplex and single-family units, where when you drive down them and you look at them side by side, they don't look a whole lot different from each other, so I really have a hard time imagining what the issue is here. Basically, what it comes down to, we're making a big fuss about somebody that ought to be informed, that ought to know what they're buying into. It's a PUD that's pretty clearly laid out that it could be duplexes or single families, but we're concerned about that person that, for some reason or another, doesn't get it, and then they get upset because a duplex is built across the street from them? I don't know, that seems a little overreaching to me. So I, a long-winded answer, I think we would prefer not to have a site-driven PUD, that there needs to be some flexibility on where the units are located and which ones are built.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of your timeframe for, like, building on all of this property? Like, are you planning on spreading it out over 10 years?
No, not at all. I think he's, you know, again, not to put words in Mr. Watson's mouth, but I think his intentions is to build this out within a 12- to 18-month period. And again, it's, you hate to say it, because it's market-driven, you know, he's, he's had success with these units. If they continue to sell, he'll develop, but, you know, certainly Magnolia Avenue is going to proceed first, cul-de-sac will come second, although the infrastructure will probably start together.
Commissioners, anyone else with a question?
I have one question. As the developer, as the engineer and as the owner's representative, do you, do you feel, do you recognize the fact that good planning may dictate certain kinds of arrangements of these units versus a random scattered, first-come, first-served selection of a lot?
Yeah, I think there, I think there should be, or there could be some oversight, but again, what's the process, you know, and then, and how we, if I could tell you, we haven't implemented anything like this before, so how do, how do we go about drawing the, drawing the conditions and, you know, what do you, one of the things developers like, and consultants for that matter, is predictability as much as we can. We like to know what's going to be asked of us before we ever hit the Planning Department. Well, it gets really hard when, when things are coming at you that have never been discussed or done before, and you're trying to process how this could work out, and, you know, most of them have economic impacts. You know, we, the whole reason we're not making an issue of the wood fence across, along Topeka Boulevard, is because the owner says, yeah, you know, that could, that could be a difference, you know, that could make a difference to the sellability of these lots and, and the owners. But, you know, in the beginning, it was, wood wasn't an option, it was masonry and wrought iron, and these are expensive materials when you're talking about going down the length of a development, especially when you're trying to keep it affordable, so there was a lot of discussion in there about the materials, that, again, nothing like this ever has surfaced as a condition, so my answer goes back to process, you know, quite possibly, these things could, in the future, be worked out, but I just, I have a hard time with this kind of stuff on the fly, policy decisions on the fly.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Boyd before we close the public hearing? Ms. Cavazos.
So if that, in your opinion, if Number Four does not get removed, will you still go forward with the building? I mean, will you still continue? Will you put it to a halt and come back to us later?
I guess that's a decision the owner will have to make, if you feel like you want to address that, even though I can't.
David Watson with Brick and Mortar Phase One Construction. I feel like we're making this more difficult than it intended to be. We've been infilling in the Hurst subdivision, which is kind of right around the corner from there. We bought, I can't remember how many lots we had over there, seven or eight, they've all been single-family, we've been very successful with them. So when we purchased this land, we thought, well, maybe we could be as successful building single-family, but there was some concern, given the proximity to the apartment complexes and the Old Valley store, that maybe we wouldn't be successful, and we'd be stuck with a bunch of single-family lots that we couldn't develop, which gave rise to the concept of duplexes. It was still a lesser intense use than building an apartment complex, but it gave us the ability to develop, so we were looking for that flexibility. To answer your question, I think we would still go forward with it, we would just try to get a quicker focus as to what it is that's going to make it profitable. We can't market anything yet because we don't have permission to do anything, so we don't know what the nature of the lot is and what we can market, which is a long way to get to your answer, but I think, yes, we would still go forward with it, we would just try to live within the constraints. It would, however, potentially affect our desire to develop further in the city of Topeka. I mean, we're a small business, it's as hard for us to continue to face the demands of the, the staff's recommendations like they want. I think we're donating, I don't know how many feet, but we'd be donating a certain amount of our property to the city of Topeka so that they could expand Topeka Boulevard in the future. As a resident of the community, I think that's a great thing. So we would have to face the decision, if we stop, we'll just sit on the ground and wait and see if the city ever comes along and condemns it. I mean, to me, I see it as a give and take, so we're just, we're looking to try to find a way, and I know Mr. Hall and I struggled with this, to try to find something that would allow us to do it. His proposal, I think, allows us to do it, I just have to process it and figure out how to market, how we can market it to get a good feel for it. I think one idea I heard was, well, if half of them were duplexes and half of them were single-family, that'd give us lots of flexibility, I just don't know which one's going to sell. I don't know which one's going to be single-family, which one's going to be duplexes, so.
Right, thank you. Any further questions for applicant? Right, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can discuss this amongst ourselves and direct questions to staff. I'm going to start out just by tossing out, generally, I'm in favor of the, of the PUD change, allowing the PUD change here. Number Four causes concern to me as a pattern, that other people are going to look at what happens tonight, and with no process in here, while in this particular instance, they may go forward in 12 to 18 months, and all of staff may be there, there's no process in here, and there's nothing that quantifies how we avoid having an arbitrary and capricious approval. And I don't suspect that if it happened in 12 to 18 months, that there's any fear that that would happen, and I don't really hear that the applicant thinks that would happen, but there's nothing that protects against that in this instance, if things are delayed, or looking at this as a future method of doing business. So with that, do other commissioners have comment?
I do. I think because it is a PUD, and it was, you know, brought to the Planning Department as being what they would like to see, that gives them the flexibility they need to play with the market. But also, it also gives the staff ability to implement a few modifications to make it be more palatable from a planning standpoint, and I think maybe that's the compromise that we have here. And I, you know, they could have brought it as a single-family development, and they did not choose to do that, so I think they have some flexibility, but yes, they have a few constraints. I think it's, I think it should move forward with the amendments that they've requested, staff has requested.
Other commissioners?
I have a question for staff. I'm not familiar with this process, so forgive me, but would this be staff's only opportunity to guide them how you would like to see it after this PUD, if it passed without Four? Would you be able to dictate or have any recommendations or guidance later on in the process?
One, excuse me, Commissioner Messina, once you recommend on it, then it kind of does, then it moves on to the governing body unless the applicant wants to change anything about it. So I guess this is the best time to, before you act on it, to confer between staff and the applicant before you make any recommendations, and I think after this, not that you can't do it, but we would probably have to pull back, and if there are modifications to that note, because quite honestly, we are not married to how the note is exactly written, we would love to have the applicant maybe suggest something different, more specific even, whatever is viable, but at this tick of the clock, this is, you've heard our intent, and you've, you've heard, we'd be willing to have a process where we protect that, or that face-to-face orientation, that's, that's the whole intent, and if we need to modify it now is the time, or we defer for a month until we come to that agreement.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Cavazos.
So, I mean, we were here, some of us were here when the whole Gemstone happened, and is there anything, when people are purchasing the lots and the homes, that would state in any form, because I don't know, is there something that would state the possibility of a duplex being built next door or across the street? Because that seemed to be an issue with the other neighborhood, was, they were told nothing was going to be there according to the developer, and I would hate for that petition or something to come up later, should we pass this without Four.
Ms. Cavazos, applicant's exactly right, I think they answered it. I mean, the, the PUD is of record, public record, if I'm buying something here, and I'm, I should be able to be aware that there could be a duplex next to me or across from me. The situation that we ran into at Gemstone, and we don't want to repeat, is the developer, the original developer left, and so we, we don't want, we don't want that to happen in the first place, but if, if we do have a situation where things change... have a situation where things change, single-family has been built, and then someone comes in, it's sold to somebody else, and they want to do a duplex, we're right back into that same situation. So that's on one hand. On the other hand, yeah, the notification is built in to the PUD. And so if I am buying, and I don't know that I'm, I don't know if they represent that they're selling the lots to single-family homeowners. I don't know that yet. But if I am buying, yeah, I should be able to, and they say, yeah, we're going to build a single-family across from you or next to you, and I take that, and I buy my lot, I still should be cognizant of that someone else could come in and do something different as well. So it's, it's, yeah, we're walking that line, maximum flexibility and protecting those types of decisions.
Any other questions from commissioners? Discussion?
I mean, I guess, I mean, Mr. Finer said that, I mean, they're not married to this language. I guess I'm inclined to vote this language forward unless there's an alternative that can be agreed upon as something they would rather see.
Again, without probably conferring with the applicant some more, I think our intent is clear, without going to actually stating that single-family detached should base, single-family detached, and, I mean, we could, we could take it that far, but I do not think it's a great idea to, on the fly, mess with notes unless it's a simple remove it or change a word here or there and move on. So I would caution against too much unless we met with the applicant.
Ms. Feeney, do I need a motion and approval from the commissioners to reopen the hearing to allow Mr. Boyd to respond?
No, that's not necessary. I might add that you could defer this for a month to give staff and the applicant time to try and work out something. That's just another option for you.
That's the question I'd like to direct to the applicant. Would they prefer to wait a month and come back and address this, or you want a decision tonight?
I would prefer to go forward, and I'm fine with number four. We'll work around it. If there's a market there, we'll make it work. If there isn't, we'll go the other way. Either, and number four satisfies that. So we would ask it go forward with number four, and I appreciate your concerns, and I guess that'll be a fight for another day.
Thank you. All right. Having said that, unless there's further comment or conversation, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion. Based on the findings and the analysis of the staff report, I move the Topeka Planning Commission forward to the governing body, recommendation of approval of the proposed amendment to the Woodland Park at Soldier Creek PUD master plan, along with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
For clarification, does that include the amendment there, the adjustment that was made during discussion of greater than 24 feet?
Correct.
In number five?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, was that what you were?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further conversation before we call for a vote? Chris?
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canard?
Nay.
Motion passes five, one.
All right. It is now time to move on to action item 2A, subdivisions 1705, P-1705 Woodland Park at Soldier Creek. Ms. Noonabell?
Yes, commissioners, this is indeed the preliminary and final plat phases for the previous consideration of the amendment to the PUD master plan. The subject plat contains 6.515 acres in rectangular shape, with its greatest length running parallel with Northwest Menningham Road. The proposal, a replat of lots one, two, and three, block one, consists of 19 single blocks, excuse me, consists of 19 single lots, including or in addition to three tracks, A, B, and C, with tracks A and C comprising two private street segments, and track B comprising a drain easement. The primary purpose of the plat is to subdivide the property into 19 residential lots. As proposed, the overall subdivision design conforms to the established standards and provisions of the subdivision regulations of the cities related to design criteria, and the design is compatible with existing and planned conditions. Based upon the findings and staff analysis, the planning department recommends the final plat of Woodland Park at Soldier Creek subdivision number three, final plat, be approved, subject to conditions in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and available for any questions, of course.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Noonabell? I think we kind of adequately addressed this one already under the last issue. Sure, clarification here on exactly what we're, our action is on this?
First, there needs to be a public hearing if anyone wants to make a comment.
Oh, okay. I thought it was separated under there, so, sorry. Then we would request the applicant come forward. Mr. Boyd?
Mark Paul.
Come back.
Yes, BB Engineering, come back. I really don't have anything to add to this, other than thank you, and I'm the last issue, and that I really missed those fourth Monday policy meetings, so this is my fix. Thanks.
You're welcome anytime. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Boyd? All right, if that, this time, then are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion on this before we take a vote, commissioners? All right, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion. I move to approve the preliminary plat and forward due a recommendation of approval to the governing body of the proposed final plat for Woodland Park at Soldier Creek subdivision number three, including the conditions in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So this memo that was handed out earlier, that pertains to both the PUD master plan and the plat. So in your motion, you should, if you agree that that note be included in the plat, you should include that in your motion or make reference to it in your motion. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
I would amend my motion to include the recommended notes be added from the staff. I don't know how to say that, but to my, to my motion.
And this would be both preliminary and final plat?
Preliminary and final plats, yes.
All right, with that change, do we have a second?
All second.
Do we have a second? Any conversation? Just please call the vote.
Mr. Canard?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, moving on to our last item, and we will be excusing Mr. Armstrong.
Will I be returning?
I don't see any reason why you need to return.
Then I'll be excused.
All right, thank you. All right, P-1706 McFarland Farm subdivision number five, and our presentation is going to be by Mr. Hall, apparently.
Yes, thank you. I'm doing this in place of Andy Driver. P-1706 McFarland Farm subdivision number five is a 19-lot, one-block phase of the McFarland Farm subdivision. McFarland, this, this, oh, thank you. This subdivision plat was actually approved as a preliminary plat years ago, and that plat expired. The, the effect of this is that this is for five more lots than the previous plat. So it's for a total of 19 lots. The property's owned R1, so it's not part of the PUD. I think the area to the east is PUD, in your development. This plat meets all the standards of a per lot size and dimensions for the R1 zoning district. It does have a cul-de-sac that is in excess of 500 feet, which requires some acknowledgement in our subdivision regulations, because generally, the standard is no more than 500 feet. However, the 500-foot, or the, excuse me, the length of the cul-de-sac was previously approved, and staff doesn't see any reason to not approve it for this plat as well. If you look at the aerial photo, so what you can see in the aerial photo is that a portion of this street, Balmaral Lane, has been, has been improved, and actually, there's a fire hydrant close to the end of the street, and there's another fire hydrant at the intersection of Balmaral Lane and Steeplechase Lane, which is the main spine road going through the This plat includes a dedication of right-of-way along Southwest Prairie on the west side. The, the applicant did ask whether they should be required to dedicate a full 30 feet from center line. Because a previous phase of the plat, they only had to go 25 feet from center line. And the answer to that is 30 feet from center line meets standards. I don't, I can't explain why it wasn't required in a previous phase, but it is our standard road width, and there's certainly ample land to do that. They did hold a neighborhood meeting, and the, the notes from that meeting are included. The staff has given you a memo that addresses one of the conditions, just to provide some clarification about the fencing around the perimeter. So there's existing fencing along the perimeter. If you drive down 10th, you'll see it. It's a, it's a white vinyl, looks like spinal, kind of a, it looks like something that fits that area. That's along the property perimeter. And what we're recommending is that the current condition, number eight in the staff report, revising that to state that, or to add a sentence saying that fencing owned or installed by individual lot owners shall be prohibited from being located within the landscape easement. There's a landscape easement along the perimeter, along the prairie and, and 10th. This is both a preliminary and final plat. Planning Commission has authority to approve the final, excuse me, the preliminary plat. On the final plat, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and the city council has the authority to approve the final plat. That is the extent of my presentation, and on behalf of answering any questions you might have. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Hall? Right, seeing none at this time, then I'd like to request the applicant come forward and address any remarks they have for the commissioners.
Good evening. My name is Steve Lacoste. I work for Bartlett and West Engineers. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and two of the owners are here tonight. Are there any questions that they need to answer? I thank Mr. Hall for his presentation. I'd like to emphasize, although we are adding some lots to this, we're not making exceptionally small lots. These are still a part of what's known as McFarland Farm Estates, is what it's marketed as, and these lots will be on the order of three-quarters of acre in size, and they're going to be marketed and built for the higher-end housing market. So oftentimes, when you hear that we're increasing the number of lots, it's to, to really get something smaller in there. But this will be congruent with what's in the area, and the owners did have the public meeting with many of the people who live in these states right now, and they discussed what they're planning to do, and apparently satisfied them enough so that they didn't feel the need to come here tonight. So we are adding five lots, and it's, it's just to get a little more density, but it's not, because we're trying to substantially change the program of these states. The other thing is, the road layout matches exactly what was submitted in, I think, 1999 with the original preliminary plat for McFarland Farms. So we're sticking with that road layout, and the length of the cul-de-sac remains unchanged. We haven't tried to extend it to get any more lots. We're sticking with what was approved in 99, and we're hopeful that that's okay today. There was some discussion of the 25-foot versus 5-foot. We are preferred to only give 25 feet, because in 1999, what was approved at that time on the preliminary plat was 25 feet. And then when we went and did the first final plat for the estates immediately to the south of here, 25 feet was granted by final plat. So we'd like to stay in line with that. We certainly are not going to draw a line in the sand over that. We certainly would like to, to strike that condition number four, if possible. But we'll do that after the commission. And that's all I have tonight.
Commissioners, anyone have a question for Mr. Lacai? All right, seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward now and address the commission? Now is the time. All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open this for discussion among the commissioners. Does anyone want to throw the initial comments out there? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I guess I would ask Mr. Hall to explain number, the reasons for number five, or, oops, number four, again, the 5-foot right-of-way.
So Commissioner Jordan, the, that's based on the city's design criteria for different types of street, based on street classification. With Prairie being a local street, the standard street section is 60, 30 feet from center on each side. And so when this goes out for review by all the various departments, one of those departments that reviews is engineering, and they review it for compliance with their design criteria and specifications, and they make that comment, and we generally follow it, and there's a reason for it. I don't know if there's a practical necessity, I can't speak to that in this case, but it was a recommendation from our engineering staff, and it is a very standard condition. Just as an example, if this was a collector, we would require 37 and 1/2 feet from center line. So 30 is quite a bit less than a collector. It's not a, it results in kind of a misalignment a bit on that side of the subdivision as a whole, but it's not particularly onerous, I would say, in this case. There might be a need for it in the future. And if the city came back, and I don't believe there's sidewalks on that side of the street, but if the city came back and wanted to put in sidewalks, and they needed that right-of-way, if they don't get it through dedication, the city has to acquire it through... if they don't get it through dedication, the city has to acquire it through more painful measures, painful in terms of, for the public at least.
Thanks, Mr. Hall.
I would ask, was there a review conducted by the staff when they're noting this difference? Was there a change in ordinances or anything that would have led to a 5-foot difference? Change, a change?
No, I'm sorry.
Given that the original was in 1999, and now we're in, we're in 2017?
No, my only guess, Mr. Chair, is, as I told Mike, I said possibly there was some relief in 99 because there wasn't lots on both sides of that street, those lots are backing up to the lot, to the street. I don't know, it, it, it's odd to see a 25-foot dedication, but that's my best guess, is there was, there was some relief in that, in that sense. But maybe, maybe the applicant has, or has other information, I don't.
Commissioners, any further questions for staff? Any conversation amongst ourselves?
Can you please remind me the notification process? How, how far out do people get notified about the public meeting? Or the neighborhood meeting?
So, Commissioner Cavazos, the notification was required for the neighborhood meeting, I believe it was 500 feet, because this is in excess of three acres. So it's a 500-foot radius. There is no notification of the meeting, of this public meeting.
Okay, that was, it was 500, is what I was wondering.
All right, I'm going to address the applicant very quickly. If you have information pertaining to the rationale for that 25 feet, now's the time to give it.
Well, the only comment I would make--
If you could please approach, I appreciate that.
The only comment that I would make--
Sir?
Hold off until you reach the microphone. Is it, the only comment--
Could you please, yes, your name?
Ron Lutz, one of the developers, and Ron Anderson's one of the other developers, is that we've already sold several lots on Prairie with the 25-foot, and now we're going from 25-foot and zigging in, and we're going to do 30-foot, it just is not a consistent--
I understand that, but is there, I mean, I, we all get the inconsistency here, but is there, do you know why the 25-foot was given at that point in time?
No, 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 I don't remember that, so.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Commissioners? I'm inclined to go forward with this, leaving number four the way it is, since that is the city's standard, even though it's unusual to have this 5-foot difference, since we don't have a specific reason why. It was, it was justified in the other, I understand that that's perhaps inconvenient for the developer, but, you know, they've stated they'll go forward one way or the other. So I mean, that's my preference on it, I'm not married to that, but that's, that's kind of where I, where I'm coming from on it. Does anybody else have any comment on that or on the project in general?
I would concur with your, your comments on the easement, and I think that the change in this lot size is miniscule, based on the size they began with, so I'm, I'm in favor of the project as it proposed it.
Not seeing any other, anybody else jumping forward with comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Jordan?
Move to forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body of the proposed plat for McFarland Farm subdivision 5.
We have a motion, and we're okay with the format on that?
I'll second.
And we have a second? Any further discussion? Just, we're ready for a vote?
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Right, that concludes our action items for tonight. Mr. Feiner, are there any further comments?
I do not have any, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, anything further? Got a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
No objections? We're adjourned.